Time is 6:00 PM. Council of the City of Denton now convenes a new regular session. Tonight's invocation will be given by Larry Goodwin, pastor of the Reddies Church.
Father, we just thank you for this day and we thank you for all of your blessings that you have so graciously bestowed upon us. We thank you for our city. We thank you for our leaders tonight. And Lord, I'm reminded of your word, Jeremiah 29:7, when you told the prophet to pray for the peace and the prosperity of the city to which you had sent him, because if the city had peace and prospered, so would the people. So tonight, we pray for the peace and the prosperity of Denton. We pray that our leaders would be guided, our righteousness. We pray tonight that your blessing would continue to overshadow us and that your will and purpose would be done, not only in our individual lives, but corporately as a community. So we thank you for the opportunity to recognize you here at this proceeding tonight, and we just ask your blessing on each person and participant, and we ask it all in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, the government, and the citizens, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, prophecial.
Mayor and council, I'd like to invite Alvin Bailey up here please, along with his fellow librarian staff. We tried to do this last meeting, but we didn't have the award. It wasn't present. But now it is. Alvin and his folks, his library staff, received a Texas Municipal Library Directors Association Award. They don't hand these out all the time. There are a number of libraries per year that get them. Denton was selected this year. 2014 Achievement of Library Excellence presented at Denton Public Library. As you know, we've made a number of improvements to our library these last couple of years. Those improvements, the physical building improvements, really don't have anything to do with this award. This award is really about our library meeting certain standards of achievement. And I'd be lying to you if I told them that I understood exactly what all of them were. But I know that Alvin Bailey does. So I'd like to give him just an opportunity to kind of don't on his folks, because they are hardworking people and they give sort of a community a lot. Alvin?
Team name that's there in it for the last month. Thank you all for this opportunity. TML Excellence Award is about service, and there are 10 areas that you have to achieve in. Well, first thing you have to do, you have to get accredited by the state library. And currently, there are 555 libraries that are accredited by the state. And then, we need to accomplish in 10 areas, and that includes things like children's programming, adult programming. You have to do some administrative stuff, which means I actually have to do something more than drink coffee, and review our policies and procedures. And as well, you have to document that you have actually accomplished things in these 10 different areas. Well, this year, we did that. And there were 39 other libraries in the state that also accomplished that. But so, we were one of the 39 out of the 555 that got it done last year. And we're really proud of that. We think it represents a commitment to service and excellence that we think is consistent with the city's core values.
Absolutely. So please join me in thanking and congratulating.
Item number three, consent agenda. Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, by saying aye. Most like sign. Our motion carries. Item number four, A. Proceed with report on ordinance for signs. This is.
May I ask, Mayor and council? Staff is proposing several minor changes to the existing sign regulations in order to improve consistency with the building permit process, increase business visibility, and improve awareness of community events and activities. The following are the proposed changes. In 19-2, item B, we want to change the permit expiration date from 90 days after issuance, if work hasn't commenced, to six months after issuance, if the work hasn't commenced. And also change where work has began, that the, right now, it says that the permit shall expire in 80 days, 180 days, I'm sorry. And we would like to change that to expire in one year after the permit. Also, in section 19-4, the change that we're asking is to remove item A and B, which A is investigation and B is the investigation fee. And we would like to add that work started prior to the issuance of a building permit will be assessed a fee of twice the cost of the permit. And this is in alignment with our other permits. In section 19.54, the special event or public announcement signs, we would like to change that number of signs allowed from 6 to 24. And this change is based on feedback from community groups trying to get the word out on their events and activities. In section 19-85, which is canopy signs, right now, we do not allow for the gas price to be added to the canopy, and we are requesting this allowance. And in section 19-117, the promotional signs, currently, we allow two 30-day permits for promotional signs, and we're requesting that we change that to four 30-day permits. And this change is also based on feedback from local businesses. And 19-138 are off-prem signs. Currently, we do not allow for existing off-prem signs to be converted to digital, and we're asking that that just be removed from the ordinance and allowed them to be converted.
Questions from council?
Mayor?
Can you elaborate on number six, one, the permit off-prem signs, converted to digital signs? Is that, are we still having that ordinance as far as the number of, how many seconds it has to stay on?
Yes, yes. Nothing about that can change. It'll stay the same. There, it's just in there that if there's an existing off-prem sign, that it can't be converted to a digital sign, but there's really not a reason why it can't be converted. So we just thought we'd ask to have it removed.
Do we have any challenges with light? I mean, the one thing I can see is that maybe might be an issue is just light pollution, you know, as far as obviously, suddenly, signs that maybe were just, they were dark at night, and that some of them had lights, some of them don't have lights. Now they all start to, or they start to go digital. That's going to cause issues in some neighborhoods or some federal affairs that we have to see.
I mean, that's a possibility, but the way that most of our off-prem signs are located right now, with the exception of, there's one on Morton Street, but it was existing before this ordinance was ever written. And they've really worked with the citizens in that area. I think they turn that off now at midnight, where it's not affecting any of the residents that live around it. And I really can't think of another off-prem sign that is that close to a neighborhood.
Do we have anything in there to protect it? There is a case like that again, that where somebody has that.
I don't.
So, is there an area type thing that you got that is sticking out in your mind?
I do know we've got some boards along, like Armstrong, moving on, different areas that may be a concern. They wind up, all of a sudden, they're dark now, they might end up in the future, that might cost somebody. And if there's no way to go back and have any review of that, it all is just automatic, it's going to happen, and we won't have any oversight on it. Try not to overkill this issue, but I do think you have a good point. Is there a way to, under that circumstance, to convert one? That if there's residents in there that we can notify, surrounding property owners similar to a change in zoning?
Let me respond, Mayor. Mayor, there's absolutely, that is a process that could be written and drafted into language. What I would suggest that the action council take with this is just to table that. But let's continue this conversation on ideas, because I think we can come back to council with an ordinance then that addresses some of these things. One of the things I was thinking when Councilman Beck raised his flag on, what about light pollution for existing neighborhoods? Maybe there's a, and I don't know if this is a wide enough circle, to maybe it's a thousand-foot, if there's residences within a thousand-foot area, you're not allowed to do it, or you're not allowed to do it without the residence's permission. Challenge with that is people move, and then someone moves in, they're like, whoa, what is this? You know? Maybe there's hours of operation like this one sign is doing, you can't turn it off at midnight or something like that. But what I don't want to do, though, is craft that legislation now without the staff having an opportunity to fully figure out the impact of what this may or may not do.
So you hear the basic tenor, I guess?
I do.
Beck, you want to make a motion?
I guess I'll make a motion on all the other items to prove the other ones, or you want to table the whole thing?
Just table the whole.
Okay, how many do we table this agenda item?
Second. Have a motion, Councilman Beck, second. Councilman Rowley, all in favor, by saying aye. Most like sign. Motion's tabled. Thank you, staff. Agenda item 4B, consider change to donation leave policy. Ms. Hart.
Mayor and council, the employee benefits Congress has been working on reviewing the donation leave policy. Our current policy only allows for vacation time donations for FML qualifying events. The major changes that have been made in the policy that they're proposing is that instead of vacation time, it's sick time that's allowed to be donated, still for FML at qualifying events, with a maximum amount that one employee can take out per year, 720 hours from the pool. There will still be a minimum requirement to donate. You have to have so many sick hours in your bank to protect the employee themselves who's donating. If anything was to happen to them, they would still have time to take off for themselves. And there will also be a maximum, you can't donate more than 40 hours per year, per employee. So somebody who has 2,000 hours of sick time can't just go donate 1,000 hours from the pool. There's still going to be that limitation. We felt that that was somewhat of a need, because you gain sick time so much quicker than you do vacation time. And we were concerned about people who donate 24 hours of their vacation while they're only earning 3.34 hours per pay period, which is two weeks per year. They wouldn't actually get the vacation from work that's needed for them to really refresh their brain and really take a break from work. And so we're trying to prevent burnout that way. This also brings our policy more in line with other communities such as Denton and Spearman.
Carrie, was there also a change to eligibility requirements for employees? Someone who's been here for 60 days, if they have a qualifying event, can outbe covered?
They can, on a case-by-case basis. To qualify for FMLA, you have to be employed for one full year. But if someone like comes in as an employee who's pregnant, they obviously are going to need time off, and they're not going to have time to accumulate those hours, so they would possibly qualify under this policy. So that's going to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis.
Just clarification. If I'm doing my math right, we could have up to, that employee could be off up to 18 weeks on FMLA.
It's enough to carry them from their time that they have some sort of catastrophic illness to a long-term disability if needed.
So based on 720-hour maximum annually per employee, at eight hours a week, five hours a day, eight hours a day, four, five, five workdays, that would be about 18 weeks.
That's correct. What Carrie said, I think, is critical, is that 720-hour time, if you had a major medical catastrophic event happen to you, it takes 720 days before our long-term disability policy kicks in.
720 hours?
720 hours, thank you. 720 hours before long-term disability kicks in, which then gives them 60, up to 60% of their annual pay until, as long as that disability is something. And so, the thought process being is that if you had a major illness, but you didn't have the leave for whatever reason, this would be an opportunity for organizations, employees to give you the time you needed to get to that point.
That would also allow them to continue their health coverage and all that as well, right?
Yes.
It wouldn't be unpaid leave, they would be?
That's correct.
Paid. So it's like a bridge?
It's a bridge for the payroll. We would still bridge, we'd bridge their benefits anyways.
Okay.
So they get their medical and whatever else they're paying for, they get out of the paycheck regardless. They just necessarily wouldn't get the paycheck without this.
Yeah.
Is there a limit to the number of hours that an employee can accumulate?
From a sick time standpoint?
Uh huh.
No, theoretically, I think it's unlimited. But you don't, you don't take it with you when you leave unless you retire. And if you retire, you're entitled to 720 hours. Sick leave pay as part of your separation benefit, as our policy's currently written. Whenever an employee separates, they are entitled to their vacation benefits.
And so they accumulate, how many hours annually?
I think it varies.
Well, for sick time, everybody gets 120 hours per year.
Per year.
Vacation would vary based on tenure, right?
Yes.
So regardless, the life, or years of service, it's 120 hour per year, per sick.
I love the concept of allowing the newer employees access, or they've been accrued at, to Janet's point there, I do question allowing the sick time benefit to be done. I mean, because you mentioned two cities. You said it's bringing us in line with a lot of cities, or you just found?
Those are two that are running off my head.
I know that, well, let's do it. Few businesses that I'm familiar with, they have a donation policy, but it's always PTO. I mean, it's got, otherwise, there's no skin in the game for donation. I mean, to Janet's point, for around 120 a year, most employees aren't using, hardly any of that, if any at all. So there's no, there's just no, everything is going to be a qualifying event, but I don't know.
What, say, did you say people aren't using their sick time, or they are? Was that?
The reason that people get these many hours is because they come to work. And so, you're not, they're not, they're not drawing down that sick time at the pace that they are accruing, unless they have a significant event. And what did you say it was? Make sure 120 hours a year?
Five hours.
Correct. I think people aren't typically using sick time at a pace of 10 hours a month.
Well, if you... Mr. Chairman, would you, is that, would you agree with this statement that we're, that people are or are not using up their sick time? Right? I mean, what?
Yeah, people, some employees have large bags of sick time. And some, it depends on the type of employee you are too, civil service employees, certain statutory protections on sick time that other non-civil service employees don't necessarily have. But we extend that benefit to them, because the other side of the fence gets it.
Yeah.
So if you're going to have an accrued, if you're sickly accrue, it's because, yeah, it's because you're not using it. I have, personally, I have 300 and some hours, I think, in my sick leave account, and I've been here almost four years now, so...
But you brought some with you, right? I mean, that's not just?
I did.
Not just accumulated from here?
I think about 120. I didn't, you know, I think credit me 120 hours.
Yeah.
I believe. But when I was out for a month, almost a full month, with the adoption day.
Right.
That was all sick time eligible time. So that's where I burned my sick time down. I didn't burn, you know, I get sick, but I'm not, I'm not sick very often, thankfully. So that just continues to accrue and accrue. I'll never take that with me unless I retire.
Yeah, so it's your case. I mean, if you, if you donated, regardless of your hours, if you donated your sick time, unless you, unless you retire here, then really, you've not donated anything that was yours, because you're not going to get paid that when you leave. Unlike your vacation time, when you give someone eight hours of your vacation, you're foregoing that eight hours, because whether you use it to take a day off to clean your garage, or you use it to go on vacation, or you, or you get paid out when you take employment elsewhere, you are foregoing that. I think that's the situation, right?
I guess part of my deal is, I think, Mr. Chairman, maybe, may not be, this example, I bet there are a number of our employees who use up a fair amount of their sick time, or if you are on maternity leave and you don't have, you've got to take that time for that. So one round of maternity leave can deplete you pretty quick, if you have small children or any children. You know, they're, the sick time demand is pretty, is pretty high, so.
Would you have them use sick time for?
Absolutely.
Kids being?
I'm the worst example. One could find, well, an average employee, because I don't have kids.
Right.
You know, so.
Well, I don't think that, that sick leave is an entitlement. I think it's a benefit. The purpose of it is to use it if an employee happens to get sick. And I, and I think that's the purpose of it, is for the protection of that employee. And I will reiterate what the mayor said. I don't believe there's any skin in the game if you're, if you're giving away, if you, you've accumulated hours upon hours upon hours of sick leave, and you give away 40, you're not, you're not giving anything away that's really yours. You're giving away what, what has been put in there for your protection in case you have a catastrophic illness. And I totally agree that, that people need to take their, their vacation. I agree with that. I think that people need to have time away from work. But I don't know, I just have, I just have real mixed emotions about this.
Next question. What, what's the parameters on short-term disability versus long-term disability currently? I mean, how many, so you're out, we had a little brief discussion before the meeting, but three days qualifies you for?
There's a, we follow the federal FMLA requirements.
Okay.
So there's a litmus test for whether something is an FMLA eligible, then employers have to do things at that point in time, because employees are entitled to things. So we follow the same, the same checklist that other employers would. I don't remember them off the top of my head, according to mine.
I don't.
Carrie, you don't? But the, that's common across the board. Every organ, every city in the state of Texas is going to follow those federal guidelines, requirements really. And the thing you're talking about is after, if someone's, if an employee's out for three days or more, raises a flag, that's the first checkbox. Okay, wire you up. That isn't a major medical illness, or is it, is it sniffles? What is it? But if that starts the trigger of events that we then have to start notifying, hey, is this FMLA eligible? And there's, there's just a checklist that we go through. We do not offer a short-term disability plan. Our short-term disability plan really is our sick vacation. You know, if you're not, if you're judicious with your sick leave, and you take it when you're actually, when you actually need to, because you want to be on holiday, you should have enough paid time off, either vacation or sick, to carry the load, on average. Now, there's always an exception to the rule, and this is intended for that exception. When you have a good employee that's, you know, maybe they've got three kids and a single mother kind of thing, and they, they got, yeah, that's just the way it works. This helps them kind of bridge that gap a little bit until maybe a long-term disability policy would kick in for them. Frankly, we're on sick leave because I pushed it. The Congress wanted to stick with the vacation leave, if I remember correctly.
They wanted to do a one-to-one match.
A one-to-one match, yeah. And the policies that I've seen in local government are tied to sick. Right or wrong, that's just typically how they're done. I do think we need to amend our policy to allow for some of the provisions that are in here. Whether council wants to seize, donate sick leave or donate vacation time, that's really a policy decision. And if that, if council's on, on the vacation side, then staff's not going to make a strong argument one way or the other. It, the point is that, where I would follow my spirit is if council said, we don't want to extend this benefit. I think it is a benefit that needs to be out there, because it helps cover the gap for things that are, just can't planned for. They're unintended, and especially some of the provisions.
And they're already existed.
It is.
They're already existed, we're just, we're tweaking it and making it better.
Yep.
I'm all for the deal. I'd struggle with the sick time.
One more question. In the last, say, three to five years, how many employees we've had that would have benefited by having this employees that could not take advantage of this because of their lack of hours accrued or available? Have we had any cases or multiple cases?
There's been one case that I'm aware of, where an employee ran out of time, fought out right out of time, and no one else, people had already given vacation, and they weren't in a position where they either wanted to or could give again. But that's happened once in the last, in the four years of review. And that person was here, they just didn't pitch it.
Do we see, I know this is reviewed by medical doctors. Is there any opportunity for abuse of our system in doing this?
I think there's always opportunity for abuse of the system. That's where management comes in. And I think we have enough management controls in place to safeguard against abuse. The superintendents, the superintendents are really good in public works department about this, holding their employees accountable. I know that the fire police officers, their supervisors are also very good at holding their employees accountable. I'd be lying to you, if someone didn't take a sick day, probably they didn't, they should have taken a vacation day. But it happens in all organizations. When we see a pattern of abuse, we address it from a managerial standpoint.
How many opportunities, just, I guess, guess, about the year are requests sent out where someone needs donations?
Depends on the year. I mean, this past time we had several.
Several? Renee, I see you.
This last year, we had several.
Okay, so, so over the last, I think you said four years, you know, one account were run out. So of all the other several vacation times that's been adequate in met employees' needs, one time in the last four years potentially that happened then.
I will also, this, I, I know that the social security administration also allows for sick time donation, that's, that's their policy as well. And I, I think, to me, I think we're being pretty punitive, we force people to donate their vacation to the deal. I mean, if you're, if you're, if you're at a point where you need, where you need donated leave, and I know this is my personal experience, you're in a, you're in a bad spot. And so, I, those who need it, and generally, you go through that process, it's a, you know, it's, you know, everybody knows that, that it's requirements on there, so you're like, a situation that you're going to abuse. You know, normally, everybody's acutely aware of what's going on. I, you know, I've seen it, I've seen it in action, where folks can donate their leave and their sick leave. And honestly, that's, I don't know why we ask people to make their vacation for somebody else's sick. their vacation for somebody else's sick time. I would think you would want to donate your sick time to help someone else who's sick, rather than donating your vacation for somebody else's sick, I don't know, I think, I think it should be donating sick time, personally.
No discussion?
I want a motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion from Councilman Hanley, second from Councilman Beck, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number 4C, historical district design guidelines.
Mayor and Council, I would like to introduce John Akers, who is our Historic Preservation Commission Chair, and he will read this book to you tonight. Maybe not. But we also have Mr. Jim Mathis, who is a Historic Preservation Commission member with us, that we started working on this several months ago when Fay was here, and recently approved it through the Historic Preservation Commission. He'll give you a briefing on, on what's in the new design guidelines.
Great, thank you. Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. What you have in front of you is an important tool to both protect the historic character of downtown Benicent, to make it a great place for business, and also to educate people who live in the buildings or are interested in coming down here. What you have here is basically the tool that guides the board in making a decision on any time someone, the property owner, comes forward seeking a certificate of appropriateness on a change or something, or an improvement they want to make to one of their structures. This is what would guide the Historic Preservation Board in approving or denying a certificate of appropriateness. But not only is it a tool for the board, it is hopefully a tool for education for people interested in coming into the community, coming into a building, about how the board would make a decision. And hopefully, it's education about trying to protect the historic character of the property, really those character-defining features, you know, hopefully demystifying the process of what goes on. So if you're interested in purchasing a building, you could look at this and learn about how to use historic character of the building for energy efficiency, how to maintain your building, making regular upkeep, which will help preserve it. Not only does it work for those kinds of things, it also works for vacant lots. Someone wants to come and build a new building. This talks about making the building compatible and distinct, that it fits in, but doesn't try to fake people out, so it maintains the character. Why is this important? Because it is a special place, it's a national registered district, we want to be able to keep a majority of buildings that are contributing, that contribute to the character. This describes about how to protect that contributing. Also, hopefully, we'll have an opportunity to take some of those buildings that are non-contributing, as we see people removing facades, and move them back into the contributing category. But basically, this is, guides the board's work, and it will also hopefully educate, educate the public and business owners and property owners of how to maintain the historic character of the district. Like I said, it's educational, has different sections in there that should be useful, and I know the city plans on giving this to people who are interested in purchasing property in the district.
Are there any questions from council? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, move for approval.
I have a motion for Councilman Guy, second from Councilman Raleigh, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold for the last sign. Motion carries. Are there any executive session items? It's not, none at all. Time is 6:34, and we are adjourned.